Good evening, welcome. This is Town of Rutland, Office of the Select Board, regular meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2020 at 6:02 PM. We are in the Rutland Free Public Library in the lower level. This meeting is called to order. Please note, as usual, our meetings are recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access TV and on YouTube. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If anyone is looking at the Order of Business, we're going to take it out of order a little bit. We have some special guests to meet. We will start with the ones that came from out of town. Welcome, Senator Goby, Representative Ferguson.
What would you like?
Yeah.
Welcome over here. Share.
Go ahead, I'll let Kim start.
Oh, no, come on in.
No, go ahead.
Good evening.
So, nice to see everyone. Great to be back. I know, I hope you all enjoyed the MMA this past weekend. Got lots of new information and attended some workshops and had some good networking. So, we know that that's always a really valuable opportunity for you all. So, it's great to be back tonight. As you know, we work hands in hand on so many of these items and we thought it would be great to come back and just give you a little update on where we're at. I think you're all pretty well-versed on where we are right now in terms of the budget. The Governor's budget came out last week, House Two. As we know, we're early in the process and, you know, we move on from there to the House in April and then the Senate in May. You know, there are a number of initiatives in there that are funded and, you know, funding for the New Student Opportunity Act and for regional school transportation, which I know Ann's going to talk about, the caucus and what we usually do with that. You know, continuing forward motion with a lot of initiatives, including Addiction and Recovery Services and our local aid numbers, things like that, that we're continuing, obviously, to fight for and support. So, with that, I'll pass it over to Ann if you want. And we can answer questions after that.
Sure, that's fine. Would you also come over here?
That's okay. Again, yeah, thank you for having us. I know that we get an opportunity to come to a lot of events, but we like to come here yearly at least to start with this budget process because we know that it's extremely busy time, Michael and the rest of you, and so we want an opportunity at least to open up again those kind of lines of communication as we are planning and starting our budget process. So, as Kim mentioned, you know, it's very early, as you know, you've been through this many, many times, some of you, and you're very well aware of what happens. And sometimes we say that the Governor's budget is kind of dead on arrival because we kind of look at that as sort of the floor. And, you know, and for town administrators and select boards have been around for some time, as you have, you don't get too excited, you know that, you don't press the panic button as soon as you see the Governor's budget comes out, you know that that's just step one. And we'll do better, we'll do better. I think, I think that's kind of the message for local aid, for the schools, that we'll do better as, as the year goes on. On a positive side, the economy's still doing well. The economists that came to speak to Ways and Means, they're still looking for some steady growth, not maybe as robust as in the past, but at least steady growth going into this next year. So, I think that at least for FY 2021, we're in good shape. After that, we shall see, but at least for 2021, we're doing okay. One of the big things, as Kim mentioned, obviously, for, for this area is what happens with the school district. And we've tried to put out a good bill with the Student Opportunity Act. It was, you know, Kim was on the Foundation Budget Review Commission and to implement a lot of those things in, in this budget. The Governor put, what, about 330 million or so in?
In Chapter 70.
In Chapter 70. And again, I do expect that the House and Senate will do a little bit better than that moving forward. The Senate always has the benefit of the April revenue numbers, which is why if there is a little bit more money to be had, we tend to put that money into local aid and to Chapter 70. So, you'd sometimes do see a little bump even after the House does their budget as well. I'm on Ways and Means, we're going to be starting, going around the state and having the meetings with all the agencies. And our first one starts on February, I think, 16th or 7th. It's coming up, it's right, I think it's the week right before school vacation week, so that's coming. Think of, I mean, it's all going to be February next week anyway, right? You guys are going to be on vacation again before you know it. Just get off vacation, they had another one. They're all happy. So, we're here basically to see if there's any questions that you have. We've stayed in contact, Mike received a copy of the budget and some information from both of our offices and asked Michael as well if there are some priorities for the community, to make sure that we know about that going into the cycle.
And the other thing I was just going to mention too, because I'm sure it's going to come up, specific to regional school transportation. You know, we are the co-chairs of the Regional School Caucus for the legislature and, you know, it was funded at about 75.8 million down, just slightly from last year in the Governor's budget, so certainly, once again, that's one of our priorities. We did get through the work of the House and the really phenomenal work of Senator Goby in the Senate, we were able to raise that up last year, not to 100%, which, obviously, that's still always our goal, is to get it back as high as we can every year. But that is something that I figured you would all want to know about, that, you know, we recognize it's down a little bit in the Governor's budget and we're certainly, that's one of our immediate priorities, to get that back. And also, bill season, we're also finishing up some work on all of the legislation and we have some deadlines that we're also trying to meet with that on joint will time on February 5th.
Right, every, every bill that's been in committee has to have something done with it by February 5th, either go into study, could ask for an extension, very few bills will have an extension. So, roughly of the 6,500 bills that were filed during this session, by, by the 5th, they will all have been dealt with in one way or the other, even moving forward or not.
And we always appreciate your feedback. I mean, that was what we were going to push up with too, is the feedback, the letters, the emails. This is how we, you know, keep up with what our towns need, what you all need, what you support, so it is really valuable to us, so we appreciate that relationship with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions?
I just want to say thanks for the constant communication that my office has had back and forth with your offices. It's really been helpful and informational, so thank you. I know we will be reaching out regarding veterans' benefit reimbursements, just because we didn't have a VSO for most of last year due to resignation that came up. We do have one now who's getting all the work done, but I did, there wasn't as many vouchers submitted for reimbursement to the state, so our allotment did go down from 18 grand to 4 grand. And we did just add two extra clients than we had two for, because we now have a VSO who's going out and trying to find these there. So, that's just, that's the only thing that I'm thinking we're going to be reaching out for at this point. But again, thanks for the just constant communication back and forth, it's really helpful.
I did want to mention one other thing, because I don't know if you've been receiving any, any calls from folks, but the whole issue about Long Pond and I'm going to be, I'll be meeting with Commissioner Montgomery, Dan Clack from the Watershed Division, and Fred Lasky, who's the Executive Director for the MWRA. I have a meeting with them Wednesday morning.
So, thank you, Ann. On that note, have either of you ladies heard anything about the Weir River Watershed Initiative that's going on?
Yes. Well, the, yeah, the, they've come out with some draft regulations from, my understanding from, because we've worked with many of the, the groups, you know, the mountain bike groups, snowmobilers.
Outdoors in general, we've worked with them.
Right. Now, they're, they're draft regulations, so we're still waiting for feedback from some of those groups to see really where they stand with what is, is or isn't going to be done within that area. One of the things that, that is already affected is that I know that they've already started to close off some of the gates. And for the hunters, you know, I had talked to the Commissioner early on, just to make sure that the gates was left open to the end of black powder, which was at the end of December. But obviously, hunting season, there's a hunting season all year round, so that's one of the issues, you know, taking a look at, at the gates and which ones they need to shut for, you know, and of course, it always comes back that that, that the answer that we get is, you know, for the water quality. Well, so, but that's part of my conversations that I'll be having on Wednesday. Is there something specific, Jeff?
Um, yes. So, one of the constituents in the sportsman community said that what they were hearing was that initiatives to close off portions of the prison camps would be extended from about now until as far as September in there because of the way it was written, which would cut out a lot of your hunting season, but other type of activities that may take place at our prison camps. So, I know it's, it's early on, but maybe if we could put that on your plate for a follow-up?
Absolutely.
And maybe an opportunity for us to launch up a position on that?
Sure. Well, and actually, that's, that's a good point. It is always helpful when a board does submit something because it is, it is helpful when that happens.
Sorry, to the Chair. And lastly, did you have any timelines that we need to be aware of concerning the regulations that might be before us?
I'll know a little bit more on Wednesday. When I spoke with Commissioner Montgomery, and he's an interim commissioner, and he just took over beginning of November, and so he's really kind of coming up to speed and, and I would think at the very least, my, my thing to him is, you know, kind of put a little more, just hold everything as it is right now before you rush into anything until you have an opportunity to really figure out what's going on. I mean, that's going to be my kind of ask to him. And I have found him, and I think Kim has too, it's very reasonable, and I think he wants to do the right thing. And so, we've had good conversations.
We have had good communications with them. They know that both of us, obviously, are aware of what's going on and that we want to be able to give the feedback and input as well, that, you know, they're going to hear from us too.
It had been a while post 9/11 where everything was closed off and now we're getting to the point where it's, well, it had been reopened again and things that, as far as I'm concerned, have been going rather well, having access with the scouts and things like that.
Yeah, and it's typically, it's not, from the conversations that I've had, especially with, with Dan at the Watershed Division, it's not necessarily a safety issue as, as a water protection issue.
Yeah, poor species and things like that.
So, I want to circle back to finance, but I do want to broaden this a little bit, and I apologize that this is kind of what we're talking about first, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, the Town of Rutland has two watersheds that it has to protect. It hosts the aqueduct for the Quabin, and yet, an enormous amount of people, maybe more than anybody thinks, come out here for outdoor recreation. We offer a lot of outdoor recreation. And as we see this getting tightened down, and you are all both well-aware of the frustrations that this community had over a well-respected teacher losing his 15-year mountain biking club over access issues, now we're seeing additional things happening where we're going to minimize access. That's despite the fact that that's wildlife documentation online dated, I think, 2016, says swimming is allowed, and it's incongruent with some of the other documentation coming out of some of the other agencies. Just to add to that, as you both know, we have water supply issues. We would like to diversify our water supply, and the fact that we're protecting all this water and don't have access to it without spending what might be millions of dollars just becomes a huge ball, I think, of frustration for a lot of people. And, you know, the pilot money we get from the state just doesn't, just doesn't cut it.
And that was level funding in the Governor's budget too. But it's just the start.
Just the start.
Just know that it would, at the very least, be a priority for us to have a say in closing out the prison camps.
Absolutely.
Could we circle back to school funding just for a second? I think you know, in the regional meeting that was hosted in Holden several months ago, the number that the towns sort of coalesced around roughly was they really wanted to see the school try to keep to 2.5%. The school, obviously, is going to have kindergarten now fully funded, so that's something that can come off the budget, where it needed to be funded for the first year out of theirs. The feeling I have is that the number is going to be closer to 6, 6.5. And obviously, what we hear at MMA across the board is that as good as the Student Opportunity Act is and it's groundbreaking, it might not help these towns like ours, the middle class, right? So, I'm wondering what you see moving forward, if we see a request for a really significant increase.
Well, I think that, I mean, you're going to see a benefit at least from the special ed side of things. I mean, there's things that are going to be funded that you haven't had funded before. So, you will get some help through the Student Opportunity. There is no question that the way that it was designed for communities with a lot of English language learners, low income, that, yes, that those, that those communities are, again, a bigger, bigger chunk. But they also have those different needs that we don't face.
Yeah, and, and the other thing I was going to say, and thank you for the question because it's, I'm still, I thought I was going to be done when it went across the finish line, that the SOA was going to be implemented and not going to spend still every day talking about it, but I still am, and that's fine. But the other thing that, you know, as soon as the Governor's numbers came out and, you know, my phone starts blowing up and people are asking, well, what about this and what about this? And, you know, we're obviously in brand-new territory with a $1.5 billion investment, and I'm just also reminding people, it is a seven-year implementation period. And I think, not that you all aren't well-versed in it, but I think people forget too, that it's going to take time to actually ramp it up and get it fully implemented, like we said, seven years. And even the special ed reimbursement, that was a big thing, that we were able to get that out-of-stud-, out-of-district student transportation reimbursement in for circuit breaker, and that's going to impact you, hopefully, significantly. But it's also a few-year ramp up on that. It's not like in year one, we can dump all the money in that, on that one too. And, you know, so things like the charter school reimbursement's changing. I know many of the towns in the district were at the, the $30 per pupil minimum increase, but, you know, we're, as Ann said earlier, we're still, obviously, have the House and the Senate to look at these numbers and see what we can do along with regional transportation. And the one other thing that I was going to mention that we certainly will be very involved in is there is a section in the Student Opportunity Act that's really important for our towns. And that is the section that looks at the formula and the distribution of the funding through the aggregate wealth model that DESI and DOR are charged with investigating or doing an analysis of how that is functioning right now. And they have a deadline of December 31st of this year to report back to us about their findings, any recommendations, any changes. And I know Chairwoman Paish and Chairman Lewis are also really on top of this, based on all the feedback that they got from towns like ours. And it would really help us a lot if, when those discussions are starting, if the towns could go on record saying, you know, as you've done before, we really need you to look at this, this is what happens in our communities with the formula and updating the aggregate wealth model. So, I think that that's something that we can reach out, you know, and let you know when they're doing more meetings and discussion, but it will help us a lot because it took a lot to get that even in the bill and, you know, from the rural school perspective.
I was just going to say, there's also another rural school piece in there as well for them to take a look at. So, that's, that's going to be, that's very critical because we are part of that area that, with declining enrollments going forward.
So, there is opportunity for that as well, just to make sure we're on record.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have one last thing, do you want to go first?
Sure. I was just going to say thanks. I know the Safe, the Safe grants were just announced, and I want to say thank you for your help on that.
And Senior Safe, yeah.
Yeah, we got $3,900 in the Student Safe Program and $2,300 in the Senior Safe Program, so thanks for your help on pushing for.
Well, no, and thanks to you and thanks to your fire chief, because if you, if you don't apply, you don't get it. And so, you needed, and some communities didn't. And so, I want to thank you and the chief for taking that initiative.
And it does make a difference. We're seeing with the data with the kids and with the seniors, that it is, they are using it well and it makes a difference, so we appreciate the use.
That's one of the bases for the pro-, the new program that we just launched with the Fire Department, where we'll send a firefighter out to inspect a person's home to say, this could be improved here and this is how you can do it. So, that's one of the ways we're implementing that, so thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
It's good.
Thank you.
One more, and that was it? Um, I don't know that I expected an answer necessarily, but I was wondering if you had a comment on the news coming out of the State House regarding the rainy day fund? That's a big number.
Not really.
Okay. I, I know that on the Senate side, Senator Rodriguez, who's Chair, is, he wants to put in as much as he can to beef that up. And, you know, obviously, it helps when you have more in the rainy day fund, it helps with your credit rating, with the bonding agencies, and that helps all our cities and towns when the state has a good bonding number.
Yeah, I would speak to Chairman Michaelitz. I mean, I can't speak for him, but I believe he's in the same philosophy, so.
Thank you.
We hope you don't need it. True enough, yeah. All right. Thank you so much for coming.
We'll be in touch.
Appreciate that. Perhaps maybe we could persuade you to stay through the next agenda item?
Sure.
Recognize the retirement of three deputy fire chiefs.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's all right, Chair.
All right, so as you notice, we are moving through, we skipped a couple things on our Order of Business, we're headed to the next one though, after Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby again. We thank them so much for everything they do for this community. We now have three employee recognitions, very important to do, and Mr. Stone?
Well, thank you to the Chair and thank you to the representative and State Senator for coming here for this recognition. We'd like to welcome Jeff Lowe, Darren Ross, and the family of Kevin McCarthy and their families for joining us here tonight. We've asked that they come to this meeting so they could be properly recognized for their service to the town and also for their well-deserved retirements from the Rutland Fire Department. I've known all three men throughout my affiliation myself with the Rutland Fire Department, they are all friends. Darren, Kevin, and Jeff, they've lived lives of community service, an attribute that began in their high school years. Serving the Fire Department is a lifestyle that many do not fully appreciate, but I know that your families do, and for that, I first thank the families here today for their understanding and support. You too, Celia, have served the community. These men have decided it's time to pass the baton to the next generation of firefighters, but let it first be known that the men before us today have made a difference in our town. They have risen from the ranks of volunteer firefighters to deputy chiefs of the Rutland Fire Department. They have become leaders and role models, and they have done their jobs well. The Town of Rutland, with the utmost respect and appreciation for your decades of service, conveys upon each of you the key to the town. We acknowledge your retirements and on behalf of a grateful town, we thank you for your service. I'd like to invite Deputy Chief Jeff Lowe, Deputy Chief Darren Ross, and the family of Deputy Chief Kevin McCarthy, Megan and Kelly McCarthy, to come forward, and we have a presentation. Please come. So, and maybe we can get a photo with the folks in the back here? Okay. So, so it says, "The Town of Rutland Select Board presented to Deputy Chief Jeff Lowe in recognition of 35 years serving the citizens of Rutland." Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
The Town of Rutland Select Board, on behalf of a grateful town, thanks Deputy Chief Darren Ross for 40 years of dedicated service. The key to the town, sir. Megan and Kelly, please convey this to your dad that presented to Kevin McCarthy, Rutland Fire Deputy Chief, for 34-plus years of service. On behalf of a grateful town, we convey the key to the town to them. Okay? Thank you. We could maybe get just a quick group photo, would you mind? Okay, could you guys come up and grab here? Right this side here.
Girls in the middle.
And would you, would you mind? Why don't you? Perhaps?
I don't want to block anybody.
Oh, it's fine.
That's fine.
I guess please, block us. We can stand on our chairs.
I know, right?
I guess, Celia, you have the photo?
Yeah, we had a great party, I think it's a citation.
Sorry, we should have the party, but we got the citation.
You guys showing your award?
Thank you.
Yep.
Getting Zach's head.
I got a few.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Good job.
Jeff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for sticking with us.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Excellent.
Thank you. And I do just want to point out that Captain Bassett's here on behalf of Chief Knight as well, who had to be at a different meeting.
Do you have a presentation for the Chief?
No, just he's here to recognize the other.
Thanks again for coming in. Thanks for sacrificing your award.
Good night. All right, again, we're, we're going to jump a little bit, we, we still have some more, we still have some more guests that, that are here for special occasions, so I'm jumping over to new business. I'm going to go down to a Historical Commission appointment, this is in your folder, Mason Rainford. Mason, welcome. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Thanks for coming in, Mason.
So, my name is Mason Rainford, I live over on Campbell Street. I'm a senior at Wachusett Regional High School. I've lived in Rutland for about five or six years. I went to Central Tree. My interest in the Historical Commission is a personal interest in that I am someone who is really interested in history as a larger subject and specifically the history of the town. I realize that I probably don't have the typical qualifications of someone who wants to be more of a historian or something like that, but I think it's very important for younger generations to get involved in protecting and preserving the history of our town because the younger generations are the ones who are going to look back at the history of the town and want to learn more from it and take things away from it. So, I think it's important that younger generations take a role in protecting and preserving that history. I've learned quite a lot about researching at the high school. I've had fantastic history teachers, both at the middle school level here in Rutland and at Wachusett. I currently work at Big Y, I used to work at, used to work at Great Wolf for a while. But this whole, this whole time as I've moved through things, I just, I really like to learn more about the history of things, why things happen the way that they do, and digging deeper into, into like, why things happen, sorry. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much me.
Thank you.
Very impressed.
If there are any questions?
You mentioned your qualifications for it, your enthusiasm is the best qualification you can have.
Enthusiasm and drive, yes.
There you go.
Enthusiasm for history is rare, so, sort of, I appreciate that.
And can I just make a comment that you submitted like, an actual resume, and it's impressive, so I'm impressed with the amount of time and effort that you put into thought and time and effort that you put into the opportunity, just, so, good job.
Thank you.
You're the president of the, I'm sorry.
No, I would just say, as someone from a younger generation who was a history major, this made my day to get your application when I got it.
Yeah, same here. History major as well, so we have a.
And history fans.
This makes it so that we have an official quorum of the Historical Commission, so they can start to meet again after two years of not being able to meet.
That was partially the other reason that I decided that I wanted to apply for this and not something else, because I do, I do really want to get involved in the community. I think that that's one of the, like, people, people talk about like, getting involved in like, our larger communities, but I think that one of the best ways to actually impact and make a difference is to start at the smallest level, which I think is the town level, because those are like, where actual changes happen and where actual decisions and work that people do is, is actually impacting people's day-to-day lives. So, I did see that, I was looking at the website and I saw that they hadn't met for a while and that it was, I believe, a six-person committee with two people on it. So, I did kind of figure, yes, I'm not a history major, but if it's a matter of finding someone who will show up and do work and complete tasks, I can definitely fulfill that role and fulfill it to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Again, thank you.
I think with our 300th coming up, it's just so important to have a diverse commission and to have some, you know, different generations, so having your, just your presence there is going to be amazing. I do have to ask, are you staying local? You're about to graduate.
Um, maybe.
Maybe.
I may be going to, that, that was the one caveat I did have, I may be going to Ohio.
That's okay, don't let this hold you back.
Well, when I, when I am here, I will be 100% committed.
Fair enough.
I think you'll just have to brush up on open meeting law and calling in and what they need to have so that you can still participate. And obviously, your house, very old.
Yes, it is.
Did you find anything good during the kitchen renovation?
So, newspapers. Like, just old houses in general, having, they would go over, instead of using wallpaper, they'd plaster it up with newspapers. We found like little newspaper clippings about like FDR's inauguration, just like plastered up on the walls. So sort of, stuff like that has definitely always piqued my interest, because it's sort of like that connection between like the larger history of our country to a local level. Everything is very interconnected. Yeah, just exploring our house has been a pretty fun experience.
When you say Ohio, is it school?
Yeah, I got a fairly good financial aid offer from Ohio University in Athens, Ohio. So I may be going there. It will depend on other factors, but that is one of my top schools.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I didn't pick a college until the day before the deadline, so you have a while to think.
So I guess then I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Mason Rainford to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard, sir.
Congratulations.
Commissioner.
Very impressive resume.
Thanks for coming in today.
Congratulations.
I think, sorry, I think you, oh, you missed out.
When you're not in school sometime, stop by the Town Hall. The Town Clerk Anita Carlson will swear you in, and you're full ready to go. You'll get your formal appointment card at that point.
Nice, good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll feel it in. I see you're in the German club.
Yeah.
Not anymore. A long time since college, so.
All right, moving on. Thank you very much, Mason. You're welcome to stay with us as long as you like.
Yep.
Treasure collector contract signing, or do you want to do this, Paul, real quick? All right. So, I guess I'll jump back to the top of new business, which is 088 Cable Advisory Committee Appointment. Corinne Palmer, who we lost as an employee but appeared to have gained as a commission member.
Right. She has graciously offered to come on board as a fifth member of the committee. And so she was trying to get here tonight for her full-time job, kind of, well, it's a long run from Framingham to here, so she thought she might get here, but she wasn't sure. So at any rate, we made a nomination for her to join the committee, and about the only thing I can say, if there's any questions on her resume or anything else, I'll try and answer them as best as I can.
I thought it looked great. Did anybody have questions about her resume?
She's been great to work with in every capacity, so I was excited to see her.
Yep.
Stay in the ball.
Okay. All right, very good.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Corinne Palmer to the Cable Advisory Committee.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more card. All right, moving on. 090 Treasure Collector Contract Signing. This is the contract that is coming forward after negotiation. I think the last time we were in executive session to define all pieces. Did anybody have any questions about its content? This will be a public document as of tonight. We have the treasure collector here. Did you want to, you don't really, we're happy to have you. If you'd like to speak at the contract.
It's been a fun six years, and I'm looking forward to three more. How's it?
Thanks.
That's all you need to say.
We've made, we've made a lot of accomplishments, I think, in the last six years, and there's still, there's always more to do. So, and I appreciate all your support and with everything that I try to put forward and get going. So, thank you.
Likewise, we're happy to have you and.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to have somebody of your caliber on board. So we appreciate it.
We appreciate all your willingness to help educate and communicate with us, everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Borrowing money. Yeah, no, you're borrowing money. No, your dedication to the town, really, you go above and beyond all the time. And I think we, hopefully, we all know that.
Yep, we want to keep you.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Can I get a motion to sign three copies?
Motion to sign three copies of the contract for the treasure collector position.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. That was easy.
So your current contract ends on, at the end of the fiscal year, so you'll be sworn in at the beginning of the new one. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything good going on that you'd like to tell us about while we sign things? No?
Not until it's signed.
Taxes, third quarter taxes are due. February 3rd.
Thank you.
New water sewer bills will go out January 30th. Seems like there's always, everybody, there's always a bill going out and there's always a bill due. So, keeps us busy and out of trouble. So, and I, thanks.
I do want to say congratulations to Becky on being Worcester County's Treasures Association's new president.
Oh, my goodness, that's right.
Nice. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Did they give you a big badge to wear now?
No, I got a lot of, a list of email addresses and have to disseminate information to quite a few towns. So, that's good. There's like four meetings a year, which we just kind of organize and kind of do presentations of things that are necessary for treasure collectors because there isn't a lot of training out there. So most of the training is within our group, which is good. The master treasure collectors and the Worcester County ones, so.
There's a lot of good folks in Worcester County in those positions, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Let us know how we can help.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
All right.
Is she signing?
There you go.
Right at the top.
Nope, that's two. That's okay. And then we'll get Darren in.
No, we'll circle back.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, continuing to jump around a little bit. I am, I apologize, probably going to leave after this item under Old Business 078, the TA evaluation, which we had scheduled for the large public evaluation process tonight. I think we're at the point now, if the board could have a discussion. So basically, I have a quorum of one piece out of three pieces. And if individual members feel that they have given enough, I think all I need at this point is an email to that effect, and I will move forward with the documentation. But we don't at this point have a full complement of the primary objectives, the objectives that we then selected from goals, and then the cover letter. And, you know, I recognize everybody's busy. I really appreciate Mike's patience with this. The last time we met, we talked about some deadlines Friday, which would have been another Friday ago, and his comment to me was, if I could just get it to my Wednesday, which was this past week, the day before the MMA conference. And that clearly wasn't happening. And I did want to, I think we were at the point where I didn't want to send another email out to you asking for essentially a decision to be made on how you want to proceed. So I'll stay through this. If anybody has any comments about, no, I still, you know, I still want to get these other pieces in, just need a little bit more time, or no, I'm good with what I submitted. I feel it's complete, and I'd like you to move forward with that. I kind of just need that direction.
Well, I think I submitted all three pieces, so I'm good. I thought it was a really helpful exercise, too.
Yes, you are good.
Just to kind of throw that out there. I mean, even if, I'm not, not to single me out because I don't know who, but even if you don't submit something in writing, I think just going through kind of the Excel spreadsheet that we worked through was very helpful and kind of like thinking about some of the things that we've been talking about. So if we can do that, I mean, I'm happy.
Yeah, I mean, we'll certainly have enough. It was really just a question of the averages. But, but yeah, if everybody, if so, all I think I'm looking for now, either you've sent me everything and you're done, or you're going to send me an email saying, I've submitted what I am planning to submit, and you can move forward with that. Okay? And we'll, next agenda. Here we go.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turning it over to the next chair. Excuse me.
Okay.
Feel better.
Thanks.
All right, get healthy.
Thanks.
All right, why don't we just go right back to the top of our.
Yeah, we haven't done item four yet.
Approval of Treasury warrant payroll.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yep.
Got a motion to approve Treasury warrant 16 and payroll?
Motion to approve Treasury warrant 16 and payroll.
Got a second?
Second.
Do we, do we have it?
Yep, it's in the folder.
Yeah. The Treasury warrant.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Nobody has any questions or comments?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I didn't see any movement, any meetings.
None this week.
All right.
They'll be up at the next meeting.
Set data.
All good?
Okay.
Census.
You want to jump down to your administrator updates?
Sure.
Do we have a, okay, yeah, sorry. I was just confused.
So, just a couple of quick updates. The Police Department had their annual volleyball game with the students at the Deveraux School. Went very well, was very well received by both the students and the Police Department, to the point where a student at Deveraux wrote a letter to the Executive Director saying that its programs like that has changed the students' view on police officers in general from growing up in a tougher situation to seeing the RPD get involved with them in the community like that. So I thought that was really touching. It just needed to be said. That was there.
Before you move on, I think that's really, the chief has always kind of expressed the community policing kind of mantra, and I've seen a lot of that from this department, so that's really good to hear.
Yeah. Over the weekend, a couple of us went to the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Trade Show. We will be having an agenda item on that topic at the next meeting, just to go over what was said. A lot of very.
Could you just leave that a chat?
That has to be open as a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this thing I know.
Yeah. A lot of important information gathered on different topics, so look forward to going over that with you all in the next week. The town received a notice from the Environmental Protection Agency regarding our MS4 permit, stormwater permit for rather, notifying us that there was a requirement that by May of 2008, there were certain bylaws that needed to be passed by the town that were not, informing us that we need to have those passed by June 30th of this year. Director Buckley is working on that. He just got it today, but will be working with the bylaw committee to go over that information.
So the EPA can tell us, force us to write a bylaw on how we.
Or fine us in the alternative.
Is this some of that holding pattern stuff that we've been hearing about, that it was working through the courts and it was kind of?
Yeah, there were just so much that they had to review at once that now they're starting to get through the review when they got to us.
What if you didn't want to pass a bylaw?
We could find.
Yes.
It's the carrot or the stick, Jeff.
I thought we get to pick what federal laws we want to enforce or not.
Except for those that we get money for, the state has adopted. The Community Hall Annex and the Wood House received lighting upgrades this past week through the Green Communities Program into LED fixtures. So those have been installed.
That was worth the trade-off.
The, at an upcoming meeting, we'll have a representative from the Collins Center here to talk about the charter discussion and how that process usually goes forward. It's just an informational meeting, not something where a decision's going to be made at, but just an outline of, this is how they've done charter processes in other communities before, and this is the usual path that communities take.
The Collins Center is, yeah, Boston.
Boston.
UMass Boston.
Yep. And the last thing that I'd like to say is a open invitation from anyone from the general public. On February 10th at 10:00 a.m., Secretary Elizabeth Chen from the Executive Office of Elders Affairs will be coming to tour the community center, and will be holding our monthly Muffin Monday and meet and greet session with the Council on Aging at that time to coincide with that. Secretary Chen took over for Secretary Bonner last year and has been in the Secretariat for just over a year at this point, overseeing all of our Council on Aging programs Commonwealth-wide, and is coming to take a look at the programs that we offer here at ours. So when she got appointed by Governor Baker last year, I threw out an invitation to her. Secretary Sutter, who is her direct supervisor from Health and Human Services, came out last year, and now Secretary Chen is coming up. So anyone who'd like to come is welcome to.
And that's the 10th on it at 10?
Correct.
Okay.
We've had a lot of Governor Baker's administration out here looking at various things, so kudos to you on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
What's her commission?
Elders Affairs. Yep. So anything.
This is her second visit, right?
No, this is her first. This is her first. Secretary Bonner was going to come out, but then she retired, so that's why Secretary Sutter came out from Health and Human Services. So Health and Human Services is the big umbrella over anything health-related, Department of Public Health, DHS, Children and Families, Elders Affairs, all of that falls under the Department of Public, the Health and Human Services umbrella, and she runs that branch of that Secretariat.
Any funding possibilities with it?
Yes. We get a lot of funding from her Secretariat.
And that's one of the things that was a recurring theme at MMA, I think continuously, but this session especially, was just those relationships from the local level to the state level and how important they are. And they're, they're there to help us, but they can't help us if they don't know what's going on.
Yeah. This, Secretary Chen's branch of the administration pays a portion of the Council on Aging Director and the Outreach Director's salary for us annually. So we do a lot of work with them. So it's nice to get them out so they can see where their money's going towards.
Yeah.
Good job, Mike. Thank you. That's it for this evening.
This, this other form that was in here for this poll hearing?
Yes, the gentleman, the gentleman who was here when we passed that in December took the form with him, and we need a copy for the office. So Laura and Anita asked that we just.
We signed.
So you just signed two copies?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was a unanimous vote of the board. We went back and checked the approved minutes, and it was a full attendance of the board at that meeting.
Okay.
All right. Did we sign it?
I think it requires all five signatures, right?
Yeah.
Well, she'll.
Well, that's okay, buddy. A quorum of the board.
Right.
All right, US Census Bureau.
The Census Bureau will be sending out census forms shortly. If you see that in the mail, please do fill that out. This is just a notification to the public. But we also want to, have been reached out by the Census Bureau to say that they're still looking for census workers to go door-to-door and collect data for the census, pays $22 an hour. And if you would be interested in that, we have information of that at the Town Hall. Again, representatives from the federal government stopped by to drop off the forms to say that they're in big need of people to go out for the 10-year census.
Good. Thanks, Mike. Do we maybe have some say to try to market this to local residents?
Yeah, I mean, we have it up at Town Hall. We've got it up on the website.
And we have, we've had representatives come to the Senior Center to advertise the position.
And the library.
And the library.
And I saw at Big Y, they had like postcards at Big Y for pickup. I didn't know if there were any around in Marketplace or the pharmacy or anything either, just like local businesses.
I don't know, I don't know about local businesses, but we at least have them at the Senior Center in here in the library.
Nice.
So if anyone's interested, we have plenty of information for you at Town Hall on that one. It's just for this year, because of the 10-year census that we're required to do by the Constitution, $22 an hour and mileage covered.
Nice.
And if you ever did ancestry.com, you come to appreciate the census records.
Oh, absolutely.
Tells you a lot.
Absolutely.
It really does.
As long as you can read them.
Yeah, if you can read them.
The old ones. All right. Moving on. Public comment. Ready for public comment?
Just going to be brief, lengthy?
Yeah, four hours. No, I'll make it like five minutes or less.
Identify yourself, the address.
Sure. My name is Michael Borrell from the Town of Uxbridge and also have land in
the Town of Warren. So I just wanted to just follow up from the last meeting when I spoke. I watched the YouTube video several times after the meeting, and it appears that there's a lot of confusion between the, between all your board members on what was going on. So I just wanted to just spend a couple of minutes just to help clarify that information. So, so I'll start right from scratch. So the issue was, some of you thought that I was here the last time and I was actually, I guess, giving you my complaint. That wasn't the case. I apologize if I didn't specifically say that. But I wrote a little timeline. This will just make it much easier. So for the timeline, we go back to February 28, 2019, which will be a year soon, and that's when I submitted a public records request here to the Town of Rutland to get the records. On Wednesday, March 13, the Rutland Town Clerk emailed me and stated that all the records are ready to be picked up. I emailed her back and said, I'm not, I'm busy today, but I can come the following day. So I came here on Thursday, March 14, 2019, picked up the records, wrote a personal check for all the records, and left. One thing that was kind of a weird thing was, that I don't understand this, is I had also requested copies of town council bills going back two years, and the response I got from the town clerk was that you do have town council, but there have been no legal issues in the round of town council bills for two years. And I'm not sure if I don't believe that as being true, but I found that suspicious. And I asked her several times, you're gonna, you know, you don't have any bills for two years? And she said, nope, no litigation, no nothing, no bills. I even asked her the name of the town council, and she also told me that she didn't know who that was. So that's one little tidbit, but anyhow. So then moving forward, on Monday, 3/18/2019. So then moving forward, on Monday, 3/18, 2019, is when I emailed the formal written complaint to the town of Rutland, and it was sent to the police chief and your town administrator. So my complaint that you thought that I was complaining about the last time I was here, that complaint was given to the town on March 18, 2019. And this March would be a year that it's been pending in circles. One of the interesting tidbit things that I found out through my timeline is the following day at 9:44 a.m., the Rutland Police Chief acknowledged my complaint. And then I just got a piece of evidence from the Warren Selectmen's Office, and it turns out that was something that, that there's something suspicious going on between the two towns. So on that day, the Rutland Police Chief notified that he acknowledged my complaint and that he would get back to me shortly and basically rectify the complaint. The truth is, and I apologize if I didn't clarify this, at the last meeting, the police chief, I actually emailed him once back outlining the complaint more in detail, which is what he was asking for, and just a brief summary, and he never replied back, ever. So, so the thing, so what I'm trying to clarify is, this complaint has been sitting in people's emails, and people here, including the town administrator, knew these complaints were dated from the 18th of March of 2019. So here's what makes me suspicious, and this just came from the Chair of the Warren Selectmen's Office. So he, him and I had a conversation yesterday, and we figured something out. So the following day, when the Rutland Police Chief wrote to me acknowledging my complaint saying, please give me the specifics, there was, the town of Warren drafted a letter that was emailed to Mr. Nicholson from the Warren Board of Selectmen's Secretary, and it was basically a letter dated the same exact day that the police chief notified me of my complaint, which was two hours and 10 minutes later, where the town of Warren put a cease and desist order on any, any citizens getting records relating to Warren Police records from your dispatch center that you can, it's basically, it's basically a cease and desist, saying, I am hereby ordering the town of Rutland to no longer provide any public records, and if any citizen asks for public records, you must, they must go back to the town of Warren.
To the Chair, sir?
Go ahead.
If I could?
Yes.
Since you.
Yeah.
You've reached the five minutes, I just want to ask, what are you asking of the Rutland Select Board? What can the Rutland Select Board do for you today?
Yeah, okay, so.
Or is this something that should be placed on an agenda item?
If I.
Well, if we can step back.
Yeah.
You did have a discussion with the town administrator recently, correct?
Well, I would like to clarify that if I.
Well, the issue is, we were, the town administrator and I are supposed to have a meeting, and then he wrote back to me and didn't want to have a meeting. And then I, and I wrote back saying that, that, because I also had another question.
All right, hold on one second. Hold on one second.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can you address that?
Sure. In the email that I sent to you, Mr. Borrell, last Tuesday.
Yeah.
I believe it was Tuesday.
Yeah.
I informed you that, I brought the issue forward with our town council, just so that they would be aware of the complaint that you had issued to the town, and was informed by them, as I said in your email, that complaints of this nature that allege a criminal investigation as well as mention issues of monetary restitution are outside the purview of what the town can do and must be filed with the district attorney's office or the state police office for proper investigation into the matter. And that a meeting of such would be improper to address this issue for a complaint of such nature as well as things as like restitution, further investigation, arrest of town officials, because a private meeting held to that nature with those items being discussed with regard to criminal investigations would tread on obstruction of justice issues if there is an actual criminal investigation. And I also said that this was not an admission of what, of any truth to what the alleged incidents or complaints are, but rather just the proper channel for the proper investigation to take place.
But we would welcome you to put anything in writing. I'm going to ask the Chair that we move on.
Well, the only, well, that's exactly where I'm confused, is the complaint was sent to the police chief, the fire chief, Laura Paradise, and Mr. Nicholson.
Okay, hold on.
And we have visibility on that.
And that was sent almost a year ago.
No, hold on, hold on. Didn't the town administrator tell you that there was a different avenue that you had to pursue with this?
Well, there's, no, there's two separate things. The town administrator is specifically, because I have the chain of command chart, is specifically, according to the chain of command chart, of the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center, because it goes.
Yeah, we understand.
It goes Mr. Moriarty.
We understand that.
And then it has the police and fire chief, and then it lists him. But any complaints against public employees, he acknowledged to me in email that that goes back in the Board of Selectmen. That's the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to accept complaints against municipal employees, which is separate from the issue from the dispatch center. And I say that because the police chief knew in March of last year that I filed a complaint, he emailed me back and says, I acknowledge your complaint, and I kept emailing saying, what are you doing about my complaint? So right now, I'm considering the complaint abandoned, and I filed a second complaint of, whatever the right word is, misconduct of the police chief for ignoring me on the complaint. And I did tell Mitch, and I did tell Mr. Nicholson, I'm frustrated right now, and my thing that I want to do is sue the town, but their response was, oh no, but why don't we, why don't the Board of Selectmen handle it and don't sue the town? And that's the reason why. An agenda request was sent to Sheila Dib on October 31st.
All right, can you stop for a second?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're talking about suing the town for that complaint, because it wasn't addressed? So was it, weren't your instructions different than coming here to the board? Were your instructions to go through the district attorney? You just mentioned suing.
No, no, I.
Let me finish. You just mentioned suing the town.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Right, but suing the town is a civil issue.
I'm not sure what you're doing here before the board, then.
That's right, that's why I suggested that he compile it in writing, present it. You said five minutes, it's been 15 minutes. I'm not going through this every week, with all due respect.
No, I just want to get this over with. I don't want to be here every week either, but.
But it's still not clear what you are asking of this entity tonight, and, and there's public comment, and then there's a dissertation of all different complaints from Warren or whatever.
Yeah, I know.
Because, so I think it's, I mean, this is public comment, we, you're not, you don't have a right to public, we don't have to give public comment, but we will take whatever your information is in writing. We did have visibility on the response from Mr. Nicholson to you, okay?
Yeah.
He did not say that he's not going to meet with you. He was very clear, and he cited why. It was upon the advice of our chief counsel.
Yes.
In there, that if you were making.
Well, I don't know.
Sure, if you were making criminal accusation against members of our community, then you go to the district attorney's office and you file it, okay? I think he was clear.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not, I'm not going to go through this. I'm going to make a motion that we move on or close public comment, and if you have something specifically, sir, that you want, that it be compiled in writing and submitted to the town administrator.
Yeah. Well, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your input.
Can you hold on one second?
I have a motion.
Hold on one second.
I just want to clarify, too, just, again, my thing is just the process that's been outlined. That's my only thing here, is that because the complaint that you issued to the town, both in the email exchange we had last week and to the previous one, alleged that the police, fire chief, and dispatch director, which are the employee's side of it.
Yes.
Are co-conspirators in your criminal accusation. That's where they fall into the full purview of this needs to be an investigation done outside the town, just to ensure, one, proper impartiality.
Right.
But two, just proper process for complaints of this nature. I understand that you say these are complaints against an employee.
Right.
But in doing so, you claim them as co-conspirators in a criminal accusation. So that's the.
Yeah, but in the response to you, I also said there was a civil side and a criminal side.
And the civil side would have, would be under your jurisdiction, according to the chart,
because I have it right here, that says that you would address problems within the Rutland Regional Dispatch that were civil, internal town issues, not the criminal items. So that's why I sent you that long email, because I understand what all of you are saying, but I see this as not just one lump thing, I see that this could be separated in saying we have criminal issues over here and civil issues over here.
Criminal, criminal precedes it. So have you gone to the district attorney's office and say, I have evidence of a crime?
Well, that's, well, that's exactly, well, I do have a question, and the question is this, is I've already checked into that, and I, let me back, I guess I'll back up a step. So this is the.
You have to get to, you have to get to the point of all this.
Yeah, I know, I'm just.
Without, without another 15, 20 minutes, what's the point of your?
Let me finish, okay. So in regarding the criminal aspect, I would want criminal indictments.
We don't want to hear about a criminal.
This is the Rutland Select Board.
We don't want to hear anything about criminals.
I'm not asking you to do this, I'm just explaining it, because what he's saying is if, is he wants me to go to the district attorney's office.
What he's told.
Those employees would be listed, I would supply the evidence, and if they went in front of a grand jury or indicted, then that means, then that means it's out of your hands and there's now indictment.
Mr. Brill, I think, just, hold on a second. I think what we're all trying to do is point you in the right direction to give you the proper outlet to voice those complaints. This is not the appropriate outlet. So you have the district attorney's office, you have the Mass State Ethics Board, those would be your appropriate outlets to talk to. There's really no recourse for us as a board at this point with your form of complaint or your type of complaint, I think is what the town administrator is trying to convey.
Yeah.
But I don't see, but why was it that the town administrator had me file an agenda request for an executive session item that was sent to Sheila on October 31st?
I don't, I don't believe.
And there was no reply back to that.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that was what was conveyed. I, I think, again, this is not the appropriate outlet for your type of complaint, and I think the town administrator has done more than his fair share of trying to point you in the proper direction to get this thing where you want it to be.
And if I may, too, just the question of the civil versus the criminal, there's a nexus in between the two that connects the two, where the civil issue relates directly to the criminal accusation. So that's where the issue comes there. And that, nor do I have the authority to sit to talk about monetary restitution on an issue as well in the meeting.
And we got to the civil thing, right, I already discussed with you on the phone.
Get control of this. Give him, give him one more second.
Yeah, I'm just trying to explain something else that's, so what it is.
One more paragraph.
Regarding the civil thing was the employees misusing in texting, using personal phone, personal cell phones for texting, which violates the social media policy of this town, which the board wrote.
Okay.
So that particular item would be an item on the board.
Sir, 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 stop. This all encompasses into one giant mess.
Yeah.
And the town administrator has already given you the avenues to address it.
Right.
So I think at this point, we need to move on.
Ask them to answer.
And then the only other thing I have to add was, I did discuss with the town manager that if I go in the direction that I might want to go, that I would get a cease and desist order on the, on the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center, and you wouldn't have a dispatch center.
Okay.
Moving on.
Move on.
Thank you, sir.
So are you saying you want me to get a cease and desist order?
We're not saying, we're saying we're done, this is public comment, not public cross-examination. We appreciate you coming in. If you have something specific, put it in writing, and we'll try to.
And so does Sheila have any intention of putting down the.
No, thank you for your time, sir.
Can't speak for trial. Motion to move on, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So you're, so you're basically shutting off communication with me, and you don't care.
You've been given the avenues to.
Read the email that was sent, it was clear.
And again, I mean, you can, it's an open meeting, you can come, there's just nothing we can do.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
There's nobody else here, so there's nothing else for public comment.
Tomika, do you have anything?
No. We have no correspondents to deal with. So if we have no other business, I'll take a.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All right, all is fair.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.